We'll get started. I'm on. Good evening, everybody. This is the Monday, January 23 meeting of the Select Board. My name is Erin Underhill and I am the Chair. With me, I have Craig Schultz, the Vice Chair, and Ellen Rosenfeld, the Clerk. We also have Mike Gazinski, the Town Administrator, and Karen Bure DeMarzo, the Assistant Town Administrator, HR Director. We have a, what I'd consider a light agenda this evening, so we will get started. First, we have some announcements. On January 31st at 7:00 PM, there'll be a public forum for some town-owned properties. It's the Conservation Commission in collaboration with students from the Conway School of Landscape Design, and they're hosting a public forum to hear community ideas about certain town-owned properties. So that sounds like it'll be a great, great meeting to go to if anybody's interested in the town-owned properties and some open spaces. Next, we have some of our scheduled appointments and hearings. We have acceptance of a gift from the Millis Soccer Club in AED. If you could come on up. Thank you. Yeah, have a seat. So the, correct me wherever you need to, the Millis Soccer Club is generously donating an AED to have available at Oak Grove. There's a lot of soccer happens there and with some recent events in sports, an AED sounds like it would be a really, really good idea to have available. So, we wanted to thank you for the very generous donation, and they are currently working with Oak Grove Commission and the Fire Department to get that all set up in a location determined and everything. Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to thank you for having me here, and just like you said, in light of recent events in the news involving major league sports players and a growing awareness of the risk of sudden cardiac arrest to all athletes, we obviously have a concern for our youth athletes and their spectators and the community, and we feel that, we feel very strongly this is a good investment for the safety of the public in Millis, and we are, we voted to contribute and we are committed to providing the funds for the installation at Oak Grove.
Thank you. And I know who you are, but for the record, could you say who you are?
Yes, my name is Pamela Ahmad, and I'm a member of the Millis Soccer Club Board of Directors.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I invited Chief Barrett to come as well, just to speak briefly because this is kind of a whole program that they're starting to work, maybe he can speak to.
Sure. Thank you. It's very generous of the Soccer Club to donate this, and we've been working at this actually for a few years now. Doug Coots, who was he, the president of the Soccer Club or a member?
He's a longtime member, yes.
Longtime member. We've talked about it for years and this has finally come to fruition. Sudden cardiac arrest is a common thing with young students, more common than the professional athletes that we saw recently. So, to be able to provide this, put it at Oak Grove where there is a lot of soccer, is going to be very important. We've already met with the Oak Grove Commission, we have a location, we've ordered all the equipment, we're just waiting for it to arrive. And this coincides with the installation of an AED at Town Park that was donated as a senior project last year. So we'll get both of these installed, hopefully before the good weather, and then we'll have both our, you know, sports facilities kind of covered. This makes 15 AEDs in town that are not public safety-related. They're in our school systems, they're in our public library, they're in our DPW, they're here at Town Hall. And as the Fire Department, we manage them, we go around, we check them, we test them, we make sure they're all good, and we also provide all the training for anybody who needs it.
Excellent. And, go ahead.
I was just going to add that, you know, we spoke with the Oak Grove, and I spoke with the Oak Grove Fire Commission as well, and the Fire Department will be fully responsible for maintaining them once it's donated. Oak Grove will not be responsible for it. Oak Grove is basically waiting to take a vote at their next meeting to accept the gift, just kind of accept the gift on their behalf and officially choose the location, but you are simply a Select Board voting to accept the gift on behalf of the town, so.
And I know the location thing, they still need to vote on that, but for the, out of curiosity and not to put you on the spot, but at Town Park, where would the location be, do you know?
It's perfect. So Town Park, it is going to be right outside of the pickleball courts, tennis courts, basketball courts. We have to have power, and right behind the backstop of that baseball field where the playground is, there is a power unit that we're able to hook up to. Additionally, at Town Park, there is cameras there, so we're able to monitor it. We're working with Safety Signal to have both of these units alarmed, so when somebody opens it up, it'll notify dispatch and either, well, a police officer or a response as well as the Fire Department, just to make sure everything's okay, and also to make sure there isn't vandalism or the AED is walking away.
And don't have the alarm, because the one that we have out here outside of our office, as soon as you open it, I mean, it's loud.
Yeah.
To notify people that you're using it, and so to please call them and want to get help, so these will have the same alarm.
Yep, and I met with Mr. McAvoy the other day, and we have a location, he's going to vote on it, but it's centrally located in Oak Grove, near their sign, where they have power. It's a bright red stand, you'll be able to see it from the playground and all the soccer field, so it'll be in people's sight.
That's great.
We had an incident at our YMCA that we run. A 92-year-old gentleman had a heart attack after working out, he had the AED on him, and apparently the ambulance crew said he was ticked because he wanted to go out with his friends after they had used it successfully, so they're a huge lifesaver, absolutely wonderful.
And that is a great story. We hope to have that. We want them to be mad they can't go out to their friends.
When you're 92 and you're missing lunch with your friends, that's a big deal.
All right, awesome. So, do you guys have any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Gazinski, did you have something?
I do not. I was just going to say the Board just needs to take a vote to accept the AED Outdoor Cabinet and Stand as a gift from Millis Soccer Club.
I'll make a motion to accept the AED, the outdoor stand, and other accoutrements from Millis Youth Soccer Club.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept the gift of the AED from the Millis Soccer Club. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the appointment of a temporary payroll administrator. Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say we have the unfortunate news that Deborah Bro, our payroll administrator, has decided to move on, take another opportunity, which we're happy for her, but not so happy for us. But we have had some discussions, and I've spoken with the Finance Director about the need to immediately appoint a temporary payroll administrator in order to carry out those tasks, in order to make sure our payroll is properly processed and timely. And the Town Accountant, Lisa Morin, has agreed to take on that role on a temporary basis, you know, until a successor is able to come in. That will require some, obviously, she already has a full-time job as our Town Accountant, so that will require some overtime, but it won't require any additional appropriations from the Town in that the vacancy then in that payroll position would be able to fund any overtime needed. So, asking you tonight to appoint Lisa Morin as a temporary payroll administrator for the Town until a successor is appointed, and I don't know if the Finance Director has any other comments, but she wanted to come in in case there were any questions from the Board.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint, to ratify the appointment of Lisa Morin as a temporary payroll administrator.
Do you, does she want to say something?
The only thing I wanted to say is that Lisa's outstanding, as everybody knows, and she is already the payroll backup, so it just makes sense that she would be the person to be able to do the temporary appointment until we're able to get somebody to fill the role.
So absolutely no training needed.
Oh, my goodness. Great. So I second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Lisa Morin as a temporary payroll administrator. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Looking ahead to the next item, Wes. Let's miss the vote.
The next thing we have is approval of Millis Beautification Day. Again, this year, the Millis Lions Club is putting on Millis Beautification Day. That will be Saturday, April 29th, and it, they have decided it will be named Don Reynolds' Millis Beautification Day. So we're looking for approval of that, that day, so that those activities can happen.
Make a motion to approve Saturday, April 29th as Millis Beautification Day?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Millis Beautification Day on Saturday, April 29th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Do you have any background on the Don Reynolds?
That's what I was going to say, is it Don, D-O-N, or Don D-A-W-N?
D-O-N.
Is it the same, Don Reynolds, that was the groundskeeper at Glen Allen for a million years?
Probably.
That's how I know him.
I am remiss in my details, unfortunately.
We'd love to have something.
I will get more details.
Yes.
We will have a flyer.
Great.
I just don't have that yet. All right, great. Okay.
One minute.
Hearing continuation. You're three minutes ahead of schedule.
Nope.
I think you could move ahead to the Hickory Hills Street Acceptance, that's not, that's not a hearing.
Okay, all right, sure.
So Madam Chair, real briefly, and I know Mr. American is here for that as well, we have been working closely with the developer and his engineers and consultants, and the DPW has been also very active in working with them to wrap up all the issues, any remaining items in that subdivision, so we can move ahead with the street acceptance, which was authorized at the Fall Town Meeting, the Fall Annual Town Meeting, for the Board to be able to, to accept those streets and record them. And I believe you have a memo, or we did receive a memo today from Beta that outlined the remaining issues, and I think that we're at the point where we're comfortable with moving ahead. There's a few punch list items, but I think the developer has agreed to address those. So I believe Mr. American's going to answer any questions in regards to that, and he also has brought in the executed signed deed for the Board to, should you decide to move ahead to vote and sign this this evening as well. It'll be ready to be recorded, so I don't know if Mr. American has any comments for the Board, or if you have any questions for him.
Not really, there's just a few items. One's done already, the other, a couple of them are maintenance issues that the Homeowners' Association is responsible for doing, which they will do in their spring normal round of maintenance activities, so I think we're, I think we're there on the paperwork. The only thing I would note is that I have the MYLARS for the street acceptance plans, but my survey has COVID, so I couldn't get them for you today, but if you include that in your vote, that you can sign those, then I'll bring them in probably tomorrow and drop them at the Administrator's Office, and then you guys can sign them at your leisure, and then if you go ahead, whenever your documents are finalized, I'll record them.
So, has he turned it over to the homeowners?
Oh, yeah.
A long time ago?
Yeah.
So are we, do we know who the president of the, do we know anything?
Chris Andrew Otis, that's his last name.
We've had, we've had, yeah, we've met him, we've had correspondence with him, he's been very active in trying to get this process wrapped up.
Okay, good. Perfect.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Hickory Hills subdivision.
Actually, I think, yeah, so.
I don't have my package.
So.
I'm way behind.
Right here, I got it.
This is the motion recommended by Town Council.
I move with the Board accept and execute the deed for Hickory Hills roadways consistent with the Town Meeting's acceptance of such streets as a public way.
Second?
It's been moved and, it's been moved and seconded to accept and execute the deed for the Hickory Hills roadways, consistent with the Town Meeting's acceptance of such streets as public ways. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have a hearing continuation for 1178 Main Street for stormwater and land disturbance.
Yes, and we are still working on revisions and responses to peer review comments, so we'd like to continue to your second meeting in February.
Okay.
I don't know what date that is.
That was the 20.
Well, that's actually the 13th, but that's, because we have a budget hearing on the 6th.
Yeah, I think it's the 27th.
That would be February 27th.
27th, that's fine.
Yeah.
And we don't have anything yet, that date, is 7:15 or?
Yeah, that's fine. That's okay with you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, excellent. Do we have to vote on that?
You do.
Yes, vote to continue the hearing to that date and time.
What was the date and time?
February 27th.
7:15.
February 27th, 7:15. I move to continue the Hickory Hills subdivision hearing till February 27th, 7:15.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to continue the hearing for 1178 Main Street until February 27th at 7:15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay. Well, moving right along, we have discussed the, and approved the sewer policy. So we've been doing a lot of work on the sewer policy. Ellen has done a lot of work on this policy, and it looks to me like we're in a good place to accept this, or obviously take a vote as to whether we accept this.
There are copies actually on the back, if anyone's interested.
I want to get a copy.
They're voting on.
Okay, sure.
Sorry. Grab them.
Any best one paper copy in here?
Actually, I'm going to steal a paper copy there, if I didn't pump a new one for myself.
There you go.
Thank you.
Dan, would you like a copy?
No, thanks.
So this is a policy, and, a policy and not a bylaw. This is something that can be a living document that the Board is able to make edits to and change as necessary and as they see fit. This is a, this is intended to be used as a guide in terms of what the priorities are with sewer connections. And like I said, Ellen's done a great job with this, in my opinion, and I do appreciate all the hard work. Does anybody have any questions about this document or concerns or anything?
I don't. I recall reviewing it, and the changes that we talked about are in here pretty much, with one I can recall.
Yeah, the only thing not in this is that addendum.
Addendum, that's what I was going to say.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's important to remember as well that as a policy, if the Board feels a month from now, two months from now, there are a few issues that come up that aren't properly addressed in here or need to be adjusted, the Board can simply post a meeting to discuss them and make amendments as needed or adjustments, so, unlike a bylaw, which is a little more difficult or process to make adjustments to.
And in addition, the addendum is kind of a snapshot for 2023, and we are tasked in the policy to take a look at it at least annually and update that addendum and make it current. So, a lot of the proposed is now going to be in the actual columns, and that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's good to keep revisiting that and keep that current, and also brings to light any concerns that we'd have as we have to go through it.
Okay.
The only question, the average daily flow rate of sewer, page one, this policy assumes the amount is 50% of the design flow rate. I thought we struck that.
No, this is actual.
I thought that we were using the, because I thought that we were using the same flow rate that was coming out of the wastewater treatment plant, 110 gallons, until it was actually built.
Yeah, we are, it's just.
That's just the definition.
Average daily flow rate, the average daily flow rate.
Yeah, that's the average, design average.
Okay.
Definition.
Okay. So when we're calculating our actual capacity, we're using the 110 stuff for stuff that's not built?
Yes.
Okay, as long as that's the way that's working, that's fine.
And under the definition of sewer commission, there is just a small addition that the, that the Board as a sewer commission can authorize a designate to do certain approvals, so that, you know, certain individual permits and so forth don't have to wait till the next Selectment's meeting. Again, this doesn't involve large subdivisions, this is individual permits from people that are already on this, along the system, which would allow the DPW Director or some other person to be able to approve that.
Yep. Madam Chair, just not to throw a wrench in the works, but since Craig asked that question, is that going to be confusing to other people? Is there a way to clarify that?
And also, I'm just seeing, again, maybe it's because I, I thought that we got rid of every reference. The 75% on page three, is that, again, not relevant to calculating betterment reserve capacity, because that's, seems like it directly is in there, where it says 75% of this total capacity shall be held in reserve by Sewer Commission?
Yeah.
For future use?
Yeah, we decided that, to hold that, so we'd have, you know, protection.
I thought that, so let me just get, the calculation is critical. So when we do the calculation, we're taking 100% of the actual, because we know that.
Yes.
And 110 gallons per bedroom for the yet-to-be-built. Okay, so the 75%, I thought we were holding 5% in reserve for future development that came up.
Well, the 5%.
Later. I guess the 75 is throwing me, I don't, I don't see, can you explain what that paragraph means to me? Because I thought that in my notes earlier. Yeah.
The 75 is, the seven, so it's the 100% of the build-out.
Yep.
And then the 75 is held.
See, it seems to be that's, that was a sentence that I had trouble with the first time through, you know, and.
Can I clarify it?
Yeah, I'm, but that's critical to the calculation, you know, and that's, that's why I want to make sure we're not, as we're calculating our capacity, I think it's quite simple, it's the actual plus 100% based on Title V.
Right.
Of what's there.
Do you remember what the 75 was?
You're asking him, I mean.
Jim.
Yeah, because I, I thought we dropped that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I thought, and I did ask these questions with the Town Administrator about the two percentages, and I have the calculations of this, with the explanations.
Right.
That's what we're, the addendum, that's what that holds.
Right.
And does it hold 75 or 100%?
No, that holds 100%, but that document is very confusing.
So do you want it to hold 100%?
I would just say that whole sentence, it's 75%.
And the 50.
So take it out?
Yeah, I would say if we drop those two lines, does that read okay? At the time of the finalization of the Betterment for Municipal Sewer Project.
So at the time of the finalization, this is the number of the capacity lost, and so it should be held in reserve for future use? Yeah, I don't.
It seems like.
It doesn't matter, right?
Just so we're calculating the table, yeah.
I think to be concise, they've got to go.
Take it out.
Take it out.
Fine, take out the sentence.
I would take both, yeah, and then.
So we're taking out that 75% sentence.
And 50.
And the. Under the definition.
Well, the, the definition on the first page, that's, the average, it's just a definition.
Policy assumes an amount that is 50%.
Because we know that the actual is 50%. It's just a definition.
Do we use that definition in the calculations?
No.
Then I'm fine with that, staying in the definition.
No.
Because that, but, but as long as it's not involved in the calculation.
It's not.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take that sentence out. You good with that?
I, no, because I still think the 50%, you're leading something to believe that you're, you can still use whatever 50% is. We're not, our bylaw, not our bylaw, our rules in the letter that you received through the Town Administrator from the Charles River Pollution District was nothing but 50%. It was 110%, and that's, until it's actually online, there is no percentages being used. But.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just think that, that what you're going to see, and I tried to explain it the other, and I did explain, meaning with Ellen, that, what you're going to start to see in that, that form over there.
Right.
You're going to see projects starting to drop off, because you find we're, we're at the place where Toll Brothers will be complete, so I think we're carrying 17,000 something gallons.
Right.
For them.
Right.
So, you know what? They're all in there now. They're all going to be producing sewerage, and we don't have to carry that 17,000 anymore, so there's no 50%, 75%, no percentages are needed. That's what that 50%, you, when you calculate it, it's.
Okay, but, so, no, I'm, I'm, I agree with what you say.
Yep.
But it has to be in here, because the panic that started everybody to thinking that we were over our capacity was the idea that we are, that we are currently using 110. Now, maybe it's not in writing, I could get it in writing, because I'm there once a month. The Charles River Pollution Control knows that it's 50%. They know that the actual, once you hook on.
Right.
We have the numbers, it's 50%. I want it in the definition, it doesn't.
As long as it's not affecting the calculations at all.
It, it does not.
Then, then I have less concern about that one, the 75 seemed to be implied in the calculation.
Funny.
It's not in there, but the reading of this led me to believe it might be.
Yeah, fine.
I'm okay with that, because it does quell the panic that people had that we're actually pumping more than we're allowed to pump, which we know we're not pumping more than we're allowed to pump.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, you want to take that sentence out, and then I'm fine.
I'll take out the 75 and leave the 50. I think that works, because it's not involved in the calculations.
And I, and I just have one other question, and I think the Town Administrator is going to look into this, I, I can't figure out what the, hang on. What does the subdivision control law mean? I don't, it's used in the document in a couple of different places, the subdivision, we don't go by them.
I was going to check with Town Council.
No, the only thing, the subdivision control law is referenced here is to distinguish between hooking up, between a sewer extension and a sewer hookup. That's the only reason.
That's what I thought, and I was going to confirm that with the Town Council to make sure that was the distinction.
Yes.
And that we don't get involved in this, directly in the subdivision control law. The Board doesn't, that's a planning board issue.
But you already have, the Board already has construction guidelines for every developer when they come into the, to apply for a sewer extension project, and that's what everything is approved by, not by any subdivision law, control law, it's not.
It is only to distinguish between a hookup, when it goes by, and a sewer extension. You go to the subdivision control.
So I think what you're saying is the difference between someone is already in front of a sewer line.
Yep.
They want to hook up, that's a hookup.
Yep.
We have a developer come in and say, we want to hook up 50 units.
That's right.
That's under the subdivision.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only reason it's referenced, it doesn't have any.
But I still think that's under your control. You, you, I, I just don't know where that's written. So maybe I'll, I'll try to find out where, that's, why, I asked the question the other day.
Yeah, I can follow up with Council and get some further clarification on what the impact has on this. I think if, if the Town Council feels that we need to change that language, like, the Board can certainly make an amendment at a future meeting to adjust that language if necessary, but we can get clarification, I mean, Mr. Kay and I can speak with Council and get some further clarification on that.
And I, I guess I would just ask for one, two more things, that if you look at permit reserve capacity, okay, then I won't ask, thank you.
It's just, we.
Thank you.[1754.23] It's just that we discussed this at several meetings over and over and over again, that you're going to put a time limit on these projects.
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, let me answer that. No.
It's not in there.
That's, it's not in.
So you can whisper to Craig.
It's not in here for a reason. We are not in the position to put time limits on projects. We will talk with the planning board. Now, you can't go back, obviously, but moving forward, the planning board, when they, when they accept a, a project, they will be asked by us if they will put a timeline.
They already have them, and they just, they, they already have it in place.
They just don't enforce it?
They just, they just enforced it with the, 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 uh, project on Main Street. They just came in for an extended permit. It's two to three years, and you still give permits out for, you, you sign a permit for the water and sewer tie-in. And, again, you're holding on capacity for projects that have gone on for ye, and I guess, you know, design and stuff like that. But that's okay. It, it, and it referenced pretty well in that document of, of how to do it, but I still think there should be some timeline that they should come back in, because you may say, hey, look at, I have a better project that's ready to start to build tomorrow. If you can legally do it, I don't know. Maybe that's a town council.
No, I think that you could, but I think that each project, to put in just a, a, a number in here, that's going to affect.
I wouldn't put in a number, but do we have the ability to set a time?
You should put a tool in there, saying the board has the authority.
We could put.
To set a time limit on any project approval.
That was in here someplace, too, from the last discussion.
No, no, never.
Okay.
But I just felt is that you wanted us to say, okay, you've got two years, you've got three years. Each project that comes has its own set of circumstances.
Right.
So to, to do that, but we could put in a line that says that the select board has the.
Commissioners may set a time limit.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for.
For any approval.
Sure. Is that okay?
And that approval could be withdrawn.
I, I, what does, I, see, I, I don't like the word "may." I think "may" is, "may" is, "may" is there to be broken.
You could put, you could add "shall." I mean.
I mean, "may," "may" is a, a, a word. I mean, if you, if you're writing a document, it should be what you, what you want, not what you're.
But isn't it redundant if they already have one at the planning board?
No, because it's two separate permits. They're looking, they're, they're looking for construction. You're all looking to sell them water and sewer.
Okay, so they, so the planning board doesn't have something for water and sewer?
They have nothing to do with water, nothing to do with water and sewer. Planning board, nothing.
But if we use the water and sewer after two years, the planning board's giving them four, that kills their project.
After two, the project is killed, unless the board gives them an extension.
We would have to work with the planning board.
Yeah.
I like "may," because it gives us the power.
Yeah, I, if I'm putting it in, it's going to be a "may," because we've got to work with the planning board.
Right.
But they, they need to come to this board, they need to come to the commissioners, and, and, and why is it taking seven years to, to, to use up this capacity that we're taking away from Millis residents? Why, why are they, I, I, it's, it's even written in there.
Well, I think that we'd set it for a period, I think we'd set it for a period at the beginning, and then we can do extensions.
And they'd have to have rational reasons for an extension.
Like any original permit.
That's, I think that's all I'm asking for.
So more of a blanket statement, so that when they do come to us, we give them.
So when they come to us now, I haven't been here when anybody's come to us, and we sign their permit, do we have any idea what the time constraints are and all their other stuff?
You're either voting yes or no.
So we have to dig in.
That's what he's saying.
Right.
You just have to say, what do you anticipate the timeframe, and if they say two and a half years, we'll say, okay, we're giving you a three-year max. And if it's not built in three years, and the only, you'd have to come back and request an extension, and you'd have to tell us why.
Which they do all the time.
Why you need an extension. At least it requires them to come back and report to the board and say, this is why we're asking for a year extension, or whatever.
So when they go to the planning board, when somebody goes to the planning board and they get their, do they get a timeline? From the, I mean, the subdivision control, you get seven years, right?
It, it's either three years and they get called back in.
So they get a timeline?
Mm-hmm.
So have they gone, oh, have, is.
Many have.
In your history. So does, what, what happens?
So the, the chair calls them back in again, just like that just came in, and Dan came in, and he gave, asked for the extension for the project for another two years.
Okay, so you don't have a problem with the way that it's been going? You just want us to do it?
No, I, I want it to be in, 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 pretty, something of, of that nature to be in this policy.
So hypothetically, if, if we had a subdivision that, that applied for an extension, let's say we set the permit for three years, planning board does three years, we all got three years on day one.
Yep.
Three years pass, and they haven't done anything, planning board says, sure, you've got another three years, whatever, there. And we say, forget it. We've got a project we'd really like to connect sewer to. You've lost your sewer. Does that put us, that kills their project.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Could you say "may" in coordination with the planning board?
First of all, that's kind of not going to happen, right? You're not going to have.
It isn't, because there's not much capacity you're talking about moving around anyways, but it's still, if, if you're writing a policy up.
He's looking for another checks and, another check valve.
It does give the board additional authority over these projects.
If you use the word "may," I don't have a problem.
Yeah, the sewer commission may set a date for, uh, for, uh, date by which to complete connection, not to be less than the planning board's date, I would think, but, I don't know.
That's, that's, okay. That, that, that could be, you know, you could.
We got to.
Yeah. Let's.
"May coincide with the, with the planning boards."
Well, it has to coincide with, that's where the "may," we won't use the word "may," Jim. We'll use "shall."
Shall set a date, yeah, and then they just have to reconnect us. The sewer commission shall set a date by which.
May. May.
Well, they'd have to come back. If they went, if they had a date with the planning board, and they had to go beyond by a year, they technically have to come, they have to go back to the planning board and come back here. So they would need both approvals and, and explain.
At least updates. Then you know what, you know what's going on.
At a minimum, you know what's going on. It requires them to come back and give you an update. It doesn't mean the board should say, great, you've got another year, but at least you can ask the questions and get the update.
We can work on that.
Yeah, the sewer commission shall set a date, yeah, for, or "may," this date may be extended. Put a "may" in there.
The board may consider an extension.
You know, we found out this morning that, at a meeting, that for our water permit, that you just can't put stuff on paper anymore. They're not looking for stuff to be put on paper. So we put down that we have a development that's looking for almost 70 something thousand gallons of water. Well, it's, but you did that.
Who's they? Who's they?
The DEP. The DEP.
Okay.
So to use it for our water permit, you, you, it's like, well, when's the last time you had anybody checked with them? Well, we never have. So if there's no checks and balances, then it, it's just like, it, it, I mean, we were told that today, right?
Yeah.
At the meeting.
Well, so how's it been working, if it's not working?
Just, just like I said, it, it, it's, it's, you're, you're coming up with a policy. If you're going to come up with a policy, that it should have some teeth into it. I mean, every policy, you know, policy written for another town doesn't mean it's going to work for Millis.
No, 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 no.
So we need to, we need to adapt this policy that was taken from another town and adapt it to Millis. So it works for all, you know, works for Millis.
Well, where else do, so, so another subdivision person, other than the planning board, where else do they go and get timelines? Appeals board, do they get?
No, they come, they, they come to you for stormwater, or they come for you, to you for water and sewer.
Is it just us and the planning board then?
Mostly the planning board and the board, probably 95% of it.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Who we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it sounds like we would need to coordinate with the planning board.
I mean, unless it's a special 40B or something like that.
And who does, and, and who, not for nothing, but who does the person come to first? They come to us first, and we grant it, and then they go to the planning board, and the planning says, you know what I mean? And so, well, the, the select board said.
Well, as you know, that usually the planning board won't approve anything until they find out that there's water and sewer for a project.
They'll probably come here first, and then they, they'd ask.
They do. I mean, they, they won't approve, we won't approve a subdivision, well, they won't approve a subdivision without, what are you going to do? Are you going to, are you putting septic systems in?
And you know if it's a, your own plan.
All right. So we steer the ship. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's hard for them to go ahead with cer, without certain approvals here.
Okay.
Typically, you go to the planning board first, and then says, go to the select board.
So we could pick a date and say it's a, your period on the permit.
And get all your approvals.
Or whatever.
So, so we would be the first one to put a date?
And you could put a date contingent upon the planning board also approving that date.
Okay.
Correct, correct. That's all.
Okay.
One has got to coincide with the other.
It sounds like it can be done. It's just, it's just a "shall" and a "may," and a.
Yeah, we need a little language, but, okay.
Yeah.
All I'm trying to say is, they came to the planning board, the developer came to the planning board, explained to them why they're not building this project and why they need an extension, and you guys have no clue.
Right.
Nothing, there's no correspondence coming back to you of saying, why is this project being, other than hearsay, so.
Right, and then we can time out when it all comes off.
I think the select board as water and sewer commissioners need to know that right.
All right, we can put that in.
Okay. Do we want to mucky with this, or you want to clean it up and do it in a couple of weeks?
I think at our next meeting, we've got to rewrite this item six that we just discussed, and then staple the.
So we'll strike the, the 75%, we'll add the item six, and then we'll be good to go.
God willing.
God willing.
I think that's it, but that 75 is what was throwing me. I thought we got rid of that last time.
I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to research it a little more, because I'm a little discombobulated, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, and I, I just thought it was done, yeah, and that was involved in the calculation, and that's what.
It is strange, the way they have been working.
Though the calculation is right.
Okay, good.
I completely agree with the way the math was done, just, which is what's important for me.
Okay. So we'll, yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes making the sausage isn't pretty, but getting, getting the best product at the end is really where you want to go.
And you want it to be clear.
That's what it's about.
If people that are doing it on a regular basis are having trouble, we need to.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Well, Ellen, thank you again for all your hard to come to us.
Okay, we'll get there. We'll get there.
I appreciate it. All right, so the next thing we have is the Enterprise Advisory Committee Charter. So in your packets is a recommended verbiage for a charter for that committee. If you all want to just take a quick refresher.
Just a couple of comments on it first. I, I'd say that it should, shall meet, just saying monthly, because it might be that nothing happens in July and August. Maybe we just.
Take out at minimum?
Just, yeah. And the other one is the committee shall advise the select board in its role as sewer and water commissioners. Yeah, because that's a different role that we wear, a different hat that we wear.
So you say that the first time that.
The committee shall advise the select, we're about midway down.
Yeah, yep.
The committee shall advise the select board, comma, in its role as sewer and water commissioners, comma, on policies relating to water and sewer and stormwater enterprise. I think that's just the hat that we're wearing at that moment.
I like this.
Yeah, I think it's pretty good, except for just, I mean, those are minor changes.
That's really good.
Not like the last one. Apologize, Ellen.
Madam Chair, not extending the meeting, but maybe you should just read through it quickly for the sake of the minutes.
That's a clerk job.
Okay, so the Enterprise Advisory Committee Charter, and I'll actually, I'll actually take these edits in when I read it, okay. In accordance with Article 5, Section 28 of the Millis General Bylaws, the Select Board hereby establishes an Enterprise Advisory Committee. The advisory committee shall be appointed by the Select Board and shall consist of three voting members, each of whom shall serve a three-year term, so arranged that the term of one member expires each year. The Director of Public Works and the Public Health Director shall serve as ex officio members of the committee. The Chair of the committee shall rotate yearly. This committee shall meet on a monthly basis and should include at least one member whose residence is not currently served by the sewer system. The committee shall advise the Select Board in its role as sewer and water commissioners on policies relating to the water, sewer, and stormwater enterprises. The committee shall be responsible for providing recommendations to the Select Board on matters relating to enterprise fund rates, fees, and projects, and shall recommend sewer connections per the sewer and water connection guidelines as set forth in the sewer policy, as well as provide comments and advice relating to proposed regulatory changes. The committee shall also provide recommendations in connection with all water, sewer, stormwater appeals. The Select Board shall consider advisory recommendations from the committee while fully retaining its independent decision-making responsibilities as the water and sewer commissioners for the town and the governing authority for the stormwater enterprise.
I'm going to, yeah, go ahead, please.
I just have a couple of nonsense things. Some, sometimes you capitalize the "C" on committee, sometimes you don't.
Okay.
And then at the very end, you have stormwater with a hyphen, and you don't have that anywhere else, so. What? You just cross that out?
The only thing I was going to do, and this goes back to "may" and "shall," "should" is a word that we weren't allowed, we were requ, we were recommended not to use in other things years ago. I'm not a lawyer, as I said. But where it says the, this committee should include a member who's not on.
Oh.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's change that to a "shall."
Yeah. Yeah, sure would.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Good catch.
I'm putting my lawyer hat on here.
There you go. Take mine.
I have my CBA hat, which I don't have. I just pretend I'm one.
Play one on TV.
Anything else?
Well, and then again, you capitalize "S" on stormwater enterprises, but down below, you don't capitalize the "S," so Karen, just.
Pick one or the other.
Just one or the other, pick one. I don't care.
Fair enough.
But I like it.
Yeah, I think it's good, and that gets, and it's, the first third of it comes straight out of the Article 5, Section 28 of the bylaws.
Well, that's why it's good.
Yeah, so it's.
And, and how are we doing, how? Do people give us resumes? How does that work?
Yep, so we could take applications from people that are interested in becoming part of this committee. What I did not put in here specifically is the, what we discussed last time in terms of the makeup of the committee, where it would not be someone from Select Board, Finance Committee, or Planning Board. But we can still retain that right when we're accepting applications.
Okay.
They're not excluded by policy, so we can look at who's coming in and stuff.
Right.
But, and the idea behind it is each of those committees has great say in what's going on with this already.
So do we say some?
So I was going to say, on the homepage of the website, there is a, where it says jobs and volunteers, I think it says. I can put something, blast something out on Facebook, basically saying, come here. They can fill out the same form everybody else fills out. I can add this as a check, you know, box to check. And if they don't get chosen for this, maybe they see another committee they might like to join.
Right, yeah.
So we can send that out if you want to do that.
Yeah, and maybe we change the, the "shall meet on a monthly basis" to "shall meet on a regular basis," because again, like I said, there might be a couple of months where we, I don't want to turn people off. In July and August, there's probably not going to be a lot, but there might be.
It's a big commitment.
Yeah.
For this, I mean.
On a regular basis.
Well, yeah, we don't know what, what, what it's going to take, right?
With a whopping 5% capacity, we may not have a lot of applicants.
Well.
And do you want to do that, like, do you want me to get that out there this week, so that by the next meeting, you have some, or, or say what, I don't know. Do you want to put a timeframe? Are there too many edits to this, that we can't approve it pending the edits, or do we think we could approve this?
I would like to get it up.
Yeah, we wait, wait. Oh, you want to get it up?
I'd like to get it up on the board, yeah.
So I guess we could vote to approve this, considering the edits. The only problem is it does reference the, so, it does reference the sewer, sewer policy, which isn't done yet.
Policy.
By the time they're meet, it'll be done.
True.
By the time they're appointed, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, you're right.
We got to, we got to time, we've started a time now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
Put it up.
Yeah.
All right, it's going up. So.
I'll make a motion to post this advisory committee and seek applicants.
And approve the charter pending edits?
And approve the, and approve the charter pending the edits, yeah.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to post this committee as an.
Chairman.
Oh.
I just have a quick question. Joyce Boyardi, 206 Orchard Street.
I smell an applicant.
No.
I'm on FinCEN.
No, no, this is, this is, you could pick, this is.
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe.
This is regular basis, not every Wednesday night.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I like that, every, yeah, the regular basis. So 10 months out of, yeah, 12. No, what, what are the applicant's requirements? Are you going to put that on the website? Is it what their requirements are? Do they have to have a knowledge of water, sewer, and?
They have to be Millis residents. One of them has to be on septic, and other than that, I think it's.
Those are the minimum requirements.
That's a requirement.
Even you can be on this committee.
No, thank you.
I think that's the requirement. Millis resident and one person has to be on.
So that, do they don't have to have any knowledge of?
Well, not to apply, I mean, but we'll see what they come in with.
Well, don't, well, I guess I.
I mean, sure, it would be ideal, of course. If somebody had a background that was specific to this.
Right.
However, I think if you're a resident and you're interested in the, the best well-being of the town, I think that's definitely something that can be worked with. So I, I think we can vet out our applicants, have some conversations with them, and, and see what we get.
Well, I see the line standing outside.
I know.
And we have the two professionals that actually are experts on this, Jim, the board of health and the DPW. So, so they do have the support structure behind them.
As a guide, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
This is a policy setting, not a do the engineer work board.
I understand. But sometimes it's nice to have a candidate who's got some background doing it rather than.
Hopefully, someone who.
Yeah.
But we're not going to shut the door to anybody, I don't think.
Okay. Okay, so moved and seconded to approve posting this committee for applicants, as well as to approve the enterprise advisory committee charter pending the discussed edits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Keep it to your camera. It's you, Jim.
Yes.
This is easy.
This is easy. So this contract, you've already approved the funding source for this. Some of it's coming from the DPW building project, and the rest is coming from the PFAS plant. Jim Donovan and myself, and the town administrator chose this company, it's Integrated Security. They've worked with us, actually, the system that we have down there is there. The police chief's vetted them, he likes them. We're going to use most of their software for when he starts installing cameras on all the streetlights. So I think I would ask for, I don't know if I have that.
Not to exceed fifty-nine thousand?
Um, no, I think, because we have to add, we added one more camera. I have the, I brought the wrong one. Is it fifty-nine thousand?
Fifty-nine, yeah, that's what it adds up to, which is three out of my.
That's, if there's any change, we can come back, but that way he can get going. So they're going to start right away, because we're going to get cameras. The PFAS building is up, it's getting there, and there's no protection. It's like wide open.
We don't want to advertise that.
No, I shouldn't say that.
It's not for the guard dogs, you have to patrol it, right, Jim?
Jim's sleeping down there.
We're going to sign an officer down there until the cameras are up.
Vicious dog.
Poor Dave is sleeping down there.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign the contract. Is that what we're trying to do here?
Yes.
The contract with, uh, right there on the first page, what is it? Integrated Security Systems for not to exceed fifty-nine thousand.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, oh, God, I just lost my pen.
Integrated Safety Systems, fifty-nine thousand dollars. Security, integrated security.
Approve the contract.
Authorize the town administrator to sign the contract with Integrated Security.
Inc.
Inc.
Inc?
Yeah.
Not to exceed fifty-nine thousand dollars.
There you go.
Perfect.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
And lastly, we have a contract for Geosphere. The other ones will do the monitoring up at the old landfill, Kath landfill. And this is a, another unfunded, DEP mandated thing that needs to be done. There's a renewal of a contract, the company, and we do have plenty of, the funds are there. So I would not, I would ask that you approve the, town administrator to sign up a contract for professional engineering consulting services to Geosphere Environmental, not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And that's in the, the DPW budget. We already, its funding is already approved for that.
I'll make a motion to authorize town administrator to sign a contract with Geosphere Environmental not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
Yeah, you said nine hundred. Is it fourteen four ninety or nine hundred?
It's fourteen four ninety.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Second.
It's been moved and second, moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign a contract for, hold on.
Fourteen four ninety.
Professional engineering and consulting services with Geosphere Environmental Management, Inc., not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So it's great with the wording, because you have to use those wording, because then we don't have to put this out. Engineering services, you don't have to go off to bid as much as, as quickly as others. So I'm glad you used those words.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
All right. So next, we have approval of a kennel license application.
So this is, yeah, so this is a kennel license application. And what we're looking for is just the board to actually approve the application itself and the fees associated with it. Millis, somehow we have not had a actual kennel license application for quite some time. I'm not sure why. But according to Mass General Law, Chapter One Forty, Section One Thirty-Seven A, of which you're intimately familiar, I'm sure, a person maintaining a kennel shall obtain a kennel license, and that's for someone who has more than four dogs. So if you have more than four dogs, you're considered to have a kennel, and you have to actually apply for this. So the fees that we set here are, personal kennel would be forty dollars per year.
Oh, cool.
What that would be is for four dogs, it's ten dollars per dog. You don't have to pay the separate license for your dog. So this is, you don't have to pay both, you wouldn't be paying eighty dollars.
Yep.
So it's both for personal kennels, as well as for commercial breeder kennels or training, boarding. And when you apply for this, you then call the animal control officer who comes to do an inspection. So once they say the inspection is fine, we sign this, and it's just an annual license. So we just need to do this according to Mass General Law.
Do we have any idea how many we would be getting?
I know.
Well, I don't know how many people actually have over four dogs personally. I don't think there are that many. I know there are, I believe there are three kennels in town.
Okay.
One being on Pleasant Street, then there's one right on Main.
Main Street.
I can't think of any of the names of them, and I think there's one other one.
Okay.
So not a lot, but it just kind of changes it.
What's the commercial fee?
The commercial fee would be seventy-five dollars a year. So they would, it's through the town clerk's office. Even though you're approving this, it will not be a select board license, it's through the town clerk's office. But you simply have to set the fees for this.
Have to approve the applications and set the fees.
So did you, like, poll the neighboring towns?
Yes, yep. I was going to say, they're going to ask where these fees came from. So actually, Erin, I would get, Erin Mallette did a lot of legwork here and found out what the fees were in the other town. So we wanted to be close to it. And it makes sense that, like I said, forty dollars a year is for dogs, if you were paying separately.
Good.
I'll make a motion to set these fees for a kennel permit at forty dollars for a personal kennel, at ten dollars a dog, and seventy-five for a commercial kennel.
Great.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the approval of a kennel license application and fee of forty dollars for presidential.
Personal.
Personal animals, and seventy-five dollars for commercial. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
This also allows the animal control officer to go if she has a complaint for someone who has several dogs, where if she hasn't done the inspection, there's this, and in place, she really doesn't have a right to go in and look at it. So this is helpful.
Okay.
And that's all.
All right.
Next, we have a board and committee liaison updates. Do you guys have anything?
I do. I have two. I, um, I have the Charles River Pollution Control. I went to, spent a lovely afternoon. They mostly talked about, well, I was talking to Mike earlier, because they talked about, they're raising their rates. But they said that they had sent a, a notice, so.
They have not given us specific numbers, but they said the rates due to all kinds of inflationary factors and the fact that we are sending more flow there, that our, our overall costs have gone up.
So that was nice. And they talked a long time about a problem with gorilic farms, which interestingly was owned by a cousin of mine, long dead. Anyway, they wouldn't tell, they wouldn't say too much. And then the second meeting I went to was, I went to school committee the other night, and that was good. They talked about some of the same things we talked about at the tri board meeting. They don't have a number yet, obviously, on what sped's going to cost. They're working diligently on it, and they don't think it's far off from what was discussed at our tri board meeting. But they'll know more for the next tri board meeting.
Yeah, I've been in touch with both Becca Roush and James Marina DeRosa. So hopefully, we'll have some meetings about that topic.
Great.
Have you set the next tri board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we have it.
The next tri board meeting, I believe it's February.
I have it, it's February fifteenth.
Yes. Okay. Wednesday? Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just curious. Okay, excellent. The next thing we have is the approval of the water and sewer commitment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, this commitment is for the month of December, two thousand twenty-two. It is for water and sewer, in a total amount of one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. I'm requesting that the board approve the December commitment.
I'll make a motion to approve the December commitment for one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the water and sewer commitment for December twenty twenty-two in the amount of one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Sure. Next, we have discussing a date for the spring annual town meeting.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have been contacted by our town council, who has some conflicts that have come up for the current scheduled date of the spring annual town meeting, which is May first, and has asked if the board would consider meeting either the second or the third, or sometime the next week. I believe conflict he has, he actually has conflicts on the first, the fourth, and the eighth. So it's an extremely busy time of year, and all the attorneys at the firm are, are pretty much booked in, and he's, he's hoping to be able to still attend himself, and thereby is asking for the board to consider some other dates. So I informed him that I would bring it up to the board this evening and at least get some feedback in regards to that.
Okay. So, do you guys have specific opinions?
I like to keep it on Monday nights. I mean, it's been the way we've done it, and this way it's in the charter and the bylaws and everything. It's spelled out on Monday night.
So hold on, though.
Yeah.
So if he's unavailable the first, the next Monday is the eighth.
Not available.
Which is elections.
Yep, he's not available that day either.
Right.
Yeah.
So then we'd have to move elections.
Or we do it on the fifteenth. Oh, but we want to do it prior to election, yeah. So I guess we are kind of.
We're, I think we're stuck at the second or third. Unless we move elections.
Can you do it?
It's not easy to move elections.
I can, I can do the third, but not the second typically.
All right.
Tuesdays are bad for me, I have work commitments on Tuesday nights usually. But the third works usually. The only, with this town meeting, oftentimes, we end up having information from the state coming late, especially with the change in administration. You know, there might be huge revenue changes. Revenue could be in flux for a very long time. So this might be slid, we, we've done that often enough, you know, when we don't get good revenue numbers from the state, and they're still working on budget proposals, governor numbers especially, and others. So this may slide through no fault of our own, even past the third, and it might be after elections, no matter what.
Yeah, there's no rule saying, I mean, certainly the board can push the meeting back to after the election, if needed. There's no special law that would forbid that. It's just that, you know, ideally, the, the plan is to have it before, but certainly, it could be after.
Yeah, let's, let's book it for the third, if we can get him, is my thought, even though I don't like it much. The eighth is the election. If we are in turmoil with state budgets, especially if they're considering anything to help the sped budget at all, you know, any extra money coming in there, I would slide town meeting back. We've slid it all the way to June, when we're in bad situations. I wouldn't want to do that if we didn't have to. But if, if it's a question of the state kicking in a million bucks on the sped problem or not, I'd, I'd be okay sliding it after our elections if we had to. But let's go for the third, tentatively, is my thought.
Tentatively, May third. And you don't have to set the specific date probably until the end of February.
Right.
But at least for planning purposes, we can, we can look at the third at this point.
Has, has anyone reached out to the school yet to see, just to make sure there isn't graduation or anything else going on?
No, that'll be our next step.
That would be very important, I think. We hope at least to have this.